Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skaggs, Chair of the Shastberry SLIF Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, August 19th, 2019. First up, let me check with the board. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Warrants, we have two. First up is payroll warrant number three, the amount of $22,731.47.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 So payroll warrant number three, the amount of $22,731.47 is approved, five zero. And next up, I have check warrant number four, the amount of $114,832.74.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Major items on this one. $20,000 to APC Play, which must be our new
This is the power card.
Yep. Which will be open by the end of the week.
Excellent.
Uh, $7,700 to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, $12,000 to Harrison Schrader Enterprises.
That's the new excavation tool for the fire department. We approved that a couple of months ago.
Uh, Matt Morris Excavating at Grandview Cemetery.
Uh, they had to redo the back porch over it to make it accessible and usable and reseed it and that sort of.
Say RK Miles, $2,700.
That's the shingles for the uh, depot road, uh, firehouse. Yeah, the others is all plugged into the proof earlier.
We have um, $5,500, $2,400, and a couple others to Reynolds and Sons.
Yeah, that's uh, to replace the Scott Pack for the fire. It was in there at the Ben Kincaid Fire. They're all, for some reason, they gave us three different bills for the same thing. Uh, about $7,500 of that was covered by insurance. And why they gave separate bills for separate parts, I don't know.
Different parts.
Yeah.
And then to Ribco Supply, we've got $21,000, a few small ones, $3,700.
Those are basically culverts and fabric, and a lot of that's just part of the contract we've already left for road repairs.
$3,000 to Sullivan Powers.
That's for the shears audit, pardon.
Pardon, okay, they don't bill it all at once?
No.
Uh, SunTrust Equipment Finance, $38,000.
Last kind of on the bottom, uh.
$77, $7,700 to TAM for July trash services. And those are the major items. Any other discussion on check warrant number four? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Check warrant number four, the amount of $114,832.73 is approved, five zero. We left minutes off the agenda. Looks like we've got a few here. But what was really, yeah, what did happen? I can't remember approving minutes for a while. That's, isn't it what we got our next backup? Okay, uh, I have minutes for July 1st. At that meeting was Tim Skaggs, Ken Harrington, Art, we were all here. So motion to approve the minutes for July 1st as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Tony, second by Art. Any discussion, corrections, additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes for July 1st are approved, five zero. July 15th, we had Tim, Ken, Art, we're all here then too. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tony moves to approve the minutes for July 15th as circulated, second by Art. Any discussions, additions, corrections? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Those minutes are approved, five zero. Special meeting on July 25th. That was Tim, Art, Tony. Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining? So those minutes are approved, three zero two. And August 5th, Tim, Ken, and Joe. Is there a motion to approve? Ken, second, second by Joe. Any discussion on August 5th minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining?
Abstained.
So those minutes are approved, three zero two. Okay, are there any announcements? A couple of things I wanted to mention. The Planning Commission has completed their first round of work on the new town plan. It is up on the web at shastberrydt.gov. We welcome citizens' input on that. There is a hearing scheduled, um, I believe it's September 24th. If that's a Tuesday, that'd be September 22nd will be the Planning Commission hearing on that. Uh, after that hearing, if there are no, um, substantial changes, it will go to the Select Board. Uh, we'll review it and schedule, I believe, two hearings on it ourselves. Uh, again, I remind people that there are openings in town government on the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board. And we are having a tax sale tomorrow, 10 a.m. here at, at Cole Hall.
Do you have some idea what rules you're going to be going with this coming through?
Yeah, we do. We'll have that coming up in the PPW report, but uh, it will be, uh, we'll just wait here.
So paving on North Road, the week of September.
Next week will be, uh, West Mountain Road.
West Mountain Road.
We'll have that in the banner, and we'll have signs posted so that people know it, so they don't drive in too far. This one's going to be a good distance down by Mr. Halt House, and another one's going to be right by the apple orchard up here, so. We've stretched it so long without a way off, but it's, it's kind of difficult. We'll have it posted this weekend.
So this week is, is North Road, next week is, is?
West Mountain, and then we'll be doing on the, uh, Peter Myers.
Myers Road, the week of September 7th.
What did you, what, what, the burnbales for those road?
Haven't heard from you.
No.
Down at Ben Kincaid, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah. Also, I should announce that, um, September 2nd is Monday Labor Day. Our regular meeting will be on Tuesday. The usual times. Are there any public comments?
Just a question.
Charlie.
Who next for everybody means a week from now or two weeks from now, same time we start?
Next.
The next on when West Mountain Road gets?
Uh, West Mountain is, um, the week of August 26th.
All right, treasures reported.
Well, you're welcome. Drag up your own shit.
Okay, um, I'm sorry to miss the last, really getting one wing, uh, discussing the tax rate, but I, um, I wanted to go through what actually goes into that. I know you guys know this, but for people in TV land might be interested to know what, how that works. Um, this is the part, would you, now actually go back to where you just were. That's the part of the spreadsheet you never see. Um, I, I made a spreadsheet that's sort of idiot, idiot proof state process for the next person, so. Everything that you usually see just is drawn from these inputs. And I thought if we went down them, you'd, uh, you'd see how I actually come up with the tax rate that I present to you guys. Um, so that, that first number you see, if they're the $1,697, I mean, one million six hundred ninety-seven, one hundred seventy-one dollars is from the, the town report. That's from the budget, um, uh, that is presented at town meeting. Um, that's the total amount of taxes that we need to raise for the budget. But that's adjusted by those, those other things, which also come from the town report. Taxpayer pre-bates, uh, joyful tax revenue, all of those are budget lines. Um, items voted down and up from the floor. Uh, it's, it's a little bit backwards. Um, I think $40,000 is actually up, but it's minus a negative. That's why it's, it's input as a negative. Um, so that was the, the vote that was proposed from the floor that we add $40,000 mostly for, I guess, gravel. So that's where that appears. So then that number that's below there is calculated out. That is the amount we actually have to raise, um, as, uh, voted on by, uh, the citizens. Okay, the, the number below that is the grand list value. That's put together by the listers. Uh, that is the, um, combined assessed value of all taxable properties in the, um, in the town, divided by a hundred. Cause they're always, everything is always done in hundred dollar units. Uh, so it's taxes per hundred dollars in assessed value. And, um, hat tip to the listers. They, they got it in exactly on time this year. The new process is working great. Where it's, um, I don't know if you've sung their praises here lately, but it was, it's, um, first time, certainly first time in my tenure. And I believe it was many years before even that, 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 before they ever had that done on time. So, so that's where that number comes from, and, um, and I'm really grateful that they did have it timed this year. Uh, the next four numbers are set by the state. Those are education rates. Um, and then you have to adjust it also by, uh, veterans, uh, exemptions. The, the state pays, uh, $10,000 for each, uh, veteran who qualifies. And then the town has voted to kick in another $20,000. So that means that, um, that $20,000 from Tom Shastberry, $10,000 from the state of Vermont is taken off the assessed value of, of veterans' properties. So those are, um, also inputs that I get from, from the listers, from the people who've gotten their paperwork in. It should all be residents because non-residents don't actually qualify. So that number four you see there is residents who did not declare their residency this year. We will be hearing from them. Um, that just means they got their paperwork. They, presumably they'll get their paperwork in later. But all those should be residents. Okay, the last two adjustments there are any properties that the town has voted to make taxes up. So I have to include those two. Right now, those are the Grange and, uh, the Community Hall. Um, and those were the, uh, that's the assessed value of, divided by a hundred of those two, um, parcels. Okay, so when you go, not go to the, uh, tax, oh, do you have any questions about any of that? Because, uh, I mean, I'm sort of rushing through it, but we always say that the tax rate is just the budget of, divide, I mean, the, uh, the grand list divided. But you can see all these other things actually go into the calculation. But if you go into the other spreadsheet, the tax rate 2020 there, this is the part I always show you. But that's all just calculated from, from all those inputs. Um, so if you just take, take those two and divide one into the other, you get a, a, a list, uh, a, a rate based on the grand list of .4211. Okay, and then, but then all those other exemptions of veterans exemptions, say really Grange Hall and, and, uh, Sheffrey Community Hall. And just a little bit for hospital abatements, and we have actually had some abatements the last couple of years. So you want to have a little wiggle, a little money. We put in $2,000 for that this year. Um, so, so the total, that's, those are all called the local agreement. So those are listed separately on your tax bill. But when you do that calculation, it comes out to, you see in yellow there, .4256. That was the number that, um, I proposed last meeting in Ascencia. Um, and, and you can see it's just a math problem. There's no decision making here. You're just checking my math, basically. Um, so that is what we come up with the core municipal rate. And you see the, down there, I include, um, the education in there, so you see what the, the total hit is. Um, I think that last, the last meeting you saw, side by side with the previous year's, um, totals, it is, uh, the, the, I, I should have put them back here. I didn't use again this time, but I presume that you reviewed those at the last meeting. And so these are the totals that you'll see on your actual tax, uh, tax note. And then that rate sensitivity analysis is just another check to make sure I did my math right. So if I, you multiply everything back out again with that tax rate, the difference is rounding out pretty fantastic. Any questions about any of that? I went through it fast.
It's worth, I think, pointing out for those of us who are simple minded, who, uh, as we've done in a lot of our spreadsheets, we used to use to calculate the budget and figure out what the tax rate was going to be. Uh, if you just divide the, uh, the
Grand list.
The, the budget by the grand list value, you get a tax rate that's within a half, less than half a cent different
Yeah.
From what it ends up being, because all of the exemptions that we have to pay for are, are small.
They're tiny, yep. Yeah, so I mean, the, the, uh, the local agreement, as you can see there, is, is half, is, is less than half penny, for a hundred dollars. So anyway, I guess we just, you need to make official and approve that, that proposed rate. I just showed you how I came up with it, and, um, do I make official?
I make the motion to set the tax rate that the treasurer's presenting.
Here, a motion from Art to set the tax rate for FY '20 at, uh, .4256 dollars per hundred dollar valuation.
Second.
Second by Tony. Discussion? All in favor of setting the tax rate at .4256, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So tax rate set?
Okay, and now that's official, I can start in on, uh, printing the bills, and I hope to get them out, if not, late this month. It depends on how quickly the stuffing goes. And I'm also stamping them with, with additional information, as we discussed before, driving them to the website. And also, uh, providing what the due date actually is. So, uh, that's an extra step. But I hope to get them out, certainly within the next two weeks.
All right, and let's remind people when they're due?
Uh, November 8th this year, the Friday before Veterans Day.
Okay, November 8th, a little bit early. Usually it's the 10th, if it's not the 8th, I guess.
Well, it's because I make it the Friday. I like to have it be a Friday at five. I think that's, that, that isn't how all the other treasurers do it, but that's how I've done it, and that's how they've done it. Um, so yeah, the, the date moves around, but it's always the Friday before Veterans Day, by the by.
Very good. Any other questions for Millenium?
Uh, Tim, David had been talking about it. Uh, about one set that they had last year for the floor, for, for gravel. Uh, I, you're gonna have to help me because I forgot how to move.
Oh, well, Ken, Ken had come to me asking about the procedures I was using, voting the town budget from the floor. And he wanted to know the alternatives to that, to make sure he was, was explaining to him that town, that town meeting has to vote to move the budget to Australian ballot. It can either be done by petition from the taxpayers, or it can be a, an article, uh, at the town meeting. Or it can be an article for Australian ballot the next day, which can be proper written. But Ken was concerned about the, the idea that the budget was being increased from the floor, when he felt that was, you know, not everybody's having a chance to vote on, on the tax increase that much. So I proposed to Ken and children to have these two alternates for it, but it can't be done just done, it has to be done by voter approval. Uh, so that would have to be taken up. I decided he does an article for an Australian ballot next year, uh, to get you the procedures for that. Or a petition from the voters to move it, like maybe education budget is voted by Australian ballot the next time. But that's totally up to a group of citizens in the board to go for that. I expressed to Ken too, I know people have expressed that they don't want that to happen, to, to discuss it before, so. It's really just kind of a legal decision, in the way everyone wants to do it.
Yeah, it's, uh, kind of comes up every year around town meeting. There's a lot of discussion about whether or not, uh, town meeting is still relevant. And, uh, that sort of participatory democracy that's really unique to Vermont, a lot of people like it. A lot of people would like to see us do everything by Australian ballot.
I just think, Tim, that every single year, you get less people over there at the floor meeting. If you've got some bunch of people, you get thirty people together, that all want to push some particular thing. They could take that much and put it out over there, and you get maybe five percent of the whole town or less over there. So that's why I thought that, you know, if it was all Australian ballot, it would represent it.
How does that work, that if you have to have your ballots printed, and all that sort of stuff? And add them forward, they say, you know, an increase or decrease something, how do you change the, what the ballot is if they ballot out the next day?
Well, if you have Australian ballot, they, and if the town votes down the budget, we have thirty days to present the new budget. And then if they vote that down, and that's Australian ballot also, and if they vote the second one down, we have another time period to present another.
I'm not, I'm not expecting they're going to vote it down. I just expect that they're going to change it.
Oh, you mean to, to make the first change over to Australian ballot?
No, no.
Oh, if, if we move it to Australian ballot, we don't vote on it at town meeting?
Yeah, there's no, they can't change anything.
You can discuss it though.
Yes, you can discuss it, but you can't change it. You can suggest that next year, we spend more money on brown wood, sort of something like that. You can't change it at the floor. But it can be voted down, and that would clearly be because they think it's too much, and then we just
Can be voted down at the polls.
At the polls, and then we have time to rework the budget and present it again. Sometimes it's a minor adjustment. Other towns I know have been voting and revoting into August, but that's more unusual than
And there are really serious costs associated with that.
Yeah, yeah, there are, there are. So most of the time, I mean, I look up at Ken, and I know what he's saying, that, you know, it can be a smaller group approving the tax rate for the entire town, but again, that's just a decision that the voters have to make. And anybody, yeah, he gets a petition item too. Anybody can make a petition, and then it would be on the, on the ballot, and it would go into effect in 2022.
Okay, so you vote in the town meeting, if you go to Australian ballot, and then it's got to go on the ballot following?
No, I think in, you can't do it at town meeting at all. You can discuss it at town meeting, but it has to be, like, next March, it would be on the Australian, Australian ballot as an article?
Alright, that's what I
Or as a petition. And then it would go into effect at the meeting in '21.
Right. And you would kill town meeting. So that's the, that's the argument, always, is that you could
Well, it'd be like the school town meeting.
Exactly.
Basically just give a little summary of activities at the school.
If anybody wanted to, to do anything with the budget, when we're doing the budget, make it to the here.
That's why you got a process, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
I mean, like I say, I just
Yeah, I, I totally understand.
When I was a kid, the, you
Yeah.
You stayed in the room only at one of them.
Oh, I know, I know.
And now it's just
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think you get five percent of it.
No. Well, that, I mean, that, I think that's a sign that we're doing okay. I think, you know, when we, you know, when, when things aren't going well, then you get the crowd in, and they participate, and and move things along, you know, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I have, I have mixed feelings about it myself. I agree with Ken that you are exposing yourself to a small group of people who want to come in and do really radical things in town government, uh, at the same time, like other people have suggested. It's a, it's a rare form of democracy that, uh, people really want us to hold on to. So we, uh, we welcome input from the public on the subject. Let us know what you think.
Hope you're okay?
We're done with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Good job. Appreciate you just finding that.
Yeah.
You have to use the way of a learner.
I'm not allowed near a sharp rock.
I've been all across the planet, please, thank you for
Yeah, no problem, yeah.
Okay, so we have two bid openings for road work. Uh, this first one, do we know which one this one is?
Cross Hill.
This is for Cross Hill. So we have bids from Matt Morris Weaver Excavating and Kurtz Excavating. So what we'll do is we'll open them, announce them, and then turn them over to Dave and the, uh, the road crew, uh, road foreman, to look at and evaluate. See if we're comparing apples to apples on these things. Unless people want to make a motion to, uh, to award a bid tonight, we can do that. Okay, this is the one from Matt Morris, Cross Hill. Talking about under drains, ditching, covert. And the lump sum amount here is $25,900. And in that one, at least, there did not look to be a lot of explanatory information. It just looked like our form that they had filled in.
And they're going to say insurance, but they, they've all got approval to
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This one is from Weaver Excavating for the Cross Hill project. And the lump sum is $20,700. See what these sums, what information is in there. Yeah, it looks like if Ken's, his power forms in here. Are these up, are these?
Those are diagrams from the state.
Okay, did we all supply those as much as we wanted?
Yeah.
So we have really no supporting information.
It was basically, they were all picked to the sites, it was mandatory site visits. Uh, the ones we had designed from the state, and we'll explain, and this is what we've been doing, state candid, which, all these guys have
And this one's from Kurtz. And the total is $36,800.
And that's providing the same service.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, that's what we'll have to take.
Yeah, I, I think Mike's going to have to sit down with you, but all these, I can look at it. If we want to move the bid, uh, the award ahead, I might ask for a special meeting, which we can kind of do, uh, on a conference call too. Maybe if two or three can be here, or if two can be here, we can get somebody else on the conference call. But I would like, uh, Mike to look at these and take a few minutes of this, the diagram of things.
Okay.
Especially with the two of them here.
Okay, and the next one is for work on Trumbull Hill, and we have the same bidders submitting. From Matt Morris. Total is $7,900. We'll attempt to pick up, that's why I hate to see what I do with them. And from, uh, Weaver, $8,000 is the total. And from Weaver, eight thousand is the total. And from Kurtz, eleven thousand is the total.
On this one, I know this project pretty well, this is there when it was designed. I think we can go ahead and vote on this one, this is straightforward, I know where the funding is coming from. But there is a time limit on this from the funding source.
Do we want to accept a low bid from Matt Morris, so seventy-nine hundred?
I think it makes more sense if you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I know this one works, there's a lot more detail in the Crosshill, and it's a different grant, so there's a lot of different parts to that. Just want to make sure everybody has the right thing there, and need to go with that. This, this I was there with, this one is...
So I make the motion to award the contract to Matt Morris.
Okay, we have forty-seven hundred dollars. We have a motion from Art to award the Trumbull Hill Road Project.
Second.
To Matt Morris, that's seventy-nine hundred dollars, the low bid, seconded by Tony, any discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining? So that bid is awarded to Matt Morris for seventy-nine hundred dollars by vote of flag to reserve.
I'll let you know in the next couple of days on the Crosshill.
Okay.
But I do think you should look back and virtual all those parts of it, if you're...
Okay. Okay, that takes us into load report I made.
If you could bring that up again, we could go through that one more time, if people might not have heard. Different projects going on, the cutting of North Road where they're working now, replacing the apron, that turned into a little bit bigger project to make the drainage better. They had to cut into the bank, take another trees down, and then they're going to mat that and use stone for the ditching coming down. We're looking at a guard rail on the north side, Boden should be paving that early next week if it's not raining. Also, next week, we're going to move to the underdrain projects on West Mountain Road. We'll get as much information out of this as we can and try and post it as well as we can, because there's such a long stretch between these projects. The one closer to like Blueberry Hill, where we're sure people coming in West Mountain from seven A know that they're going to drive like two and a half miles and hit a dead end. Because there's no way around this, we're going to have, these go down the middle of the road, there's no way to let anybody go through. They'll be closed up at night, but there's no way to work it, otherwise. So we'll post that as best we can. North Road, then again, the week of September 2nd, I'm sorry, Myers Road, that's going to be closed from the seven A going up the hill. So from Eric, he won't be able to access seven A. That, anybody's been on it, that whole apron needs to be replaced, that's going to take several days to get that up. And then Boden will come in and file grade it, and we'll pave that. And ongoing projects are just grading around town, we're going to do some brush cutting tonight, just a number of regular maintenance projects that are going on also. And then we have, of course, the Sheshway Hall project, which will be starting in mid-September, and we'll get information out of that. With that road, part of that project, and plus that project, we have to keep that road open all the time, because there is no one time. So it's a little bit more difficult. We're looking, I know it keeps coming up, timing is not great, if the construction schedule had stayed, and we could have moved it to the garage during the winter, we would be much further ahead with getting rid of this stuff. But it's not the time of year to yank people from projects to clean up this thing in the backyard. So it's probably going to be delayed until winter time, and that probably won't go to the spring. It's just impossible to work in enough time for people to do this while we're trying to do as much as we can before the weather changes. So it's been here for fifty years, another eight months.
Well, if it falls down now, it'll just help us.
Maybe we'll test that snow load this year.
We won't wreck the roof this year.
Yeah, yeah, but we are going to move the pile and our remnants of vehicles and non-functional equipment, we're going to bring that up. Some of it will be parked right here, some of it will go in the garage for a future option. And the pile, as soon as we put the biode down the middle and do soft shed, we'll move the sand in there, and it's some salt.
Well, with that trash conveyor, I can...
It's gone with us, we decided we liked it, needs a starter, the starter just came. So we're going to put the starter in, load it up, we'll...
The stroller?
No, I think we're going to keep it, that's the last I heard, they want to keep it to move armaments up there. Kind of makes sense, you know, it's, it still works.
Well, that works forever.
Yeah, so it's quite a piece of equipment, but it certainly has a lot of power, so...
It's like a nineteen-seventies vehicle.
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll come up with us up there. And it's a backup for the other one, our surplus one gone a year ago, so that's all paid for, started and ended, other things, it's not much to keep laying around. So it doesn't need much equipment, you know, make, just leave it out, fire it up when you need it.
Can't leave it up to snow.
Everything you need is snow.
You're listening to me very hard, buddy.
That's all right, we're just going to go do a lot of projects, and aiming to get them all done before November. And that'll lead us into an interesting spring, where we might have more grants that, we'll do a few projects in the spring instead of... Because we have so many hydrologically connected roads, upset my own thoughts, people seem to want to deal with smothering there, which is, you know, as long as that keeps up, as long as that... As long as the state keeps sending it our way, it's nice, so... And I think this is the proper way to go about it, instead of, and this comes up with gravel too, instead of just pouring gravel with the mud holes all the time, we're trying to get rid of, you know, the gravel springs and improve the drainage and the ditching, so that we don't have to pour so much gravel through the mud holes. There's always going to be some, but, and I should mention, another project we're doing, part of many, many things that need to be done to Myers Road, but we're going to put in three freight trains across the road, like the burritos we've done on other roads, like I used to go, to move the swamp from one side to the other. Because that's what always wrecks that road, because there's just so much water there, it's impossible. And that's, well, we, the North Bank and truck we're buying, I understand that they actually got their frame, so they might have a full truck, and they've got the monster, then we'll get their new truck. We've always been out of the grader, it's interesting though, like it smooths that road right down.
It does work?
Yeah, it does work.
They wouldn't go to, they told me to give a black cop on North Hill, give a white cop, and whatever I see, they push you down there.
Yeah, it's an interesting thing, you know, it's going to take a while, you know, we have a lot of work to do on these roads, but I think that's a good start to go with. Before the more use of, I think this might be a much...
Kenny and I would like to put on, like, have Mike consider replacing the Dodge, it's been nothing but a problem. And take a serious look at the Dodge, it may be too good for...
Yeah, no, and we've talked about that too, it's like a winter project.
I see, I see, but I just, I think the people on the road are considering things on that.
Yeah, the Dodge thing is, is an interesting vehicle, and the Volvo has pluses and minuses, and they'll ask you where you are. You know, one of the things with Mike and Star is we're looking at fleet control, is this what we should have? You know, let's not just run out and buy another hundred and ninety thousand dollar vehicle, is this something we actually need? We're churning so much that we have to get through the construction season and then take them all, because it's over the winter.
If we're going to do anything with that, from the hours inside it, it's not a type of...
Yeah, yeah, and we, and the winter time is probably the best time for people to start looking. But that's not set in stone, I think it's something to look at, there's advantages to having a smaller one, with a smaller term radius, game radius, or whatever you want to call it, and...
Landowner's too heavy on that, it's just, I see it rough to operate the first time.
Yeah, well, you saw it, operated one way once, it's operated lots of times.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's a lot of discussion points to it, it's not all negative, it's not all positive, and you got way off the negatives and positives and the other stuff. The one thing aside, because this is the first authority to go out and grab the giant train and throw it off the road, or loading, so it's in the discussion, yeah.
Okay, good. Any more, any more discussion on the roads? Okay, item nine is broadband internet, I talked about this last week with Ken and Joe. I wanted to bring it up again and keep talking about it while we're on TV, because it's, I know it's an important topic for a lot of people. People who stop me in the grocery store, that's the main thing they want to talk about now, is the internet. I recently learned about another way that towns are doing it, and so far it's one town in New Hampshire, Chesterfield, New Hampshire. And what they have done is they have contracted with Consolidated Communications to run broadband fiber to every home in town. And this is world-class internet, this is, you know, as much as you want to pay for paying internet. And they're doing it without tax money, they claim, and the way they're doing it is with a user fee on the people who sign up for the service. So there's a division of labor and expense between the town and Consolidated, although in reality Consolidated ends up doing it all. But essentially about half the expense, the expense of laying the fiber down the road, is assumed by the town, the town takes out a bond. He gave the example of, the guy at Consolidated I talked to gave the example of about two million dollars, which I believe, he gave me that example, because that's what they're spending in Chesterfield. Chesterfield's about the same size as we are, thirty-six hundred people. So for now, we can assume that's what we're talking about, two million dollar bond, twenty-year bond. The note gets paid off by people who sign up for the service. I was looking at that calculation about how many people we would need to do that, my first number that I mentioned to you guys was not right, I rechecked my numbers. It would be a lot, you know, to completely cover that note, it would be just about everybody in town signing up for the service, so...
And some people already have.
And some people already have it. And so the idea that we can do it without spending any tax money may be too hopeful. Although, you know, it's worth looking at to see what could be done, how much the town would be willing to put into it. Because I think all of us believe that our town would benefit from something like this, that our property values would go up, and we'd be more attractive to people who want to move here. Businesses would be able to start up in homes where they've got world-class internet, a lot of good could come from that. I was talking again today with Corey Chase at Public Service, the guy with the phones that we borrowed to Matt, Matt Morris' cell phone coverage. And he was explaining to me a little more about H513, the broadband bill that just passed, and what they're intending it to be used for. And there's a part of that that is for municipal planning grants, they're set for sixty thousand dollars in a chunk, more or less, you can ask for less, but it sounds like you probably want to go for the sixty thousand dollar chunk and do a feasibility study. Hire somebody to do a feasibility study to look at these things, you know, can we conceivably make a deal with Consolidated and get it all paid for? Or get some of it paid for, or what are the realistic prospects for the only other model that I know of for getting internet? If the state doesn't do it for you, and feds don't do it for you, which is the EC fiber model, where they started their own broadband company and are laying fiber. And making it work, but starting a broadband company is a really big deal. Taking out a bond is easier, paying for it is part of the, you know...
Rubber optic cable, is that below ground or above?
Above, I mean, I guess you can do it either way, but...
Well, if you do it below, it's not going to be affected by storms.
Right, but it costs...
Quite a bit more.
Quite a bit more. I've heard it quoted for electrical lines, it's like ten times as expensive to run underground. And a lot of times, it's not necessarily more reliable, because you have water problems. Maybe light doesn't have the water problems, but I'm pretty sure we'd be talking about running it on cables, on poles.
It's really pretty interesting.
They are building it as we speak, this is all brand-new stuff. Apparently it's part of the contract, and the contract example, he gave a couple, the one I remember is one fifty megabits per second download, fifty megabits per second upload, for seventy-five dollars a month, plus the ten dollars service. Which is in the same ballpark as what I'm paying for Comcast, only it's better, is, you know, twice the download speed and ten times the upload speed that I have with Comcast. It's good stuff, and you can pay, if you want to pay the money, you can pay for a thousand in both directions. If you want to start a video editing service out of your home, you can do it with these kinds of connections. So I think we should try to get one of those grants and look into, get them to evaluate what options we have. Because the message from the H513 and Laura Sebelius and the economic summits that I've been going to is that nobody's going to solve our broadband problems for us. We've got to figure out how to do it ourselves.
Did you come up with any ballpark figures, what would the prosecutor, what you would like to do with that?
The ballpark is comparison to Chesterfield, which is like two million dollars would be the town's share of it. And again, hoping that a good chunk of that is paid for by user fees.
Is it the sixty thousand dollar grant?
Right.
Straight-out grant?
Right. Yes, I didn't get into the details about the match, but nobody's mentioned a match, so I think it's a straight-out grant. So...
Do you like the motion, or you can see with that, or...
Let me dig into it a little bit more, I'll look, I skimmed the grant application, let me go through it again, and I'll work with Dave and Rowan. If we can get the pieces together, and I'm sure we can, we'll come back and ask for motion. Charlie?
Comcast Communications, obviously, is, I think, has had a work break in the country a little bit, but I don't know, you know, it's... Has anybody talked to Comcast to see if they can upgrade their system?
I haven't.
I was curious.
Yeah, I mean, if we went through this process, this Chesterfield process, it would involve an RFP.
Yes.
And a bid process, so it's not like we would go out and pit Consolidated and do it, we would put out an RFP, and if Comcast wanted to bid on it, they could. You know, I know the same story as everybody else probably does about, you know, individuals calling up Comcast and asking them to extend their service to their house, and it's ten thousand dollars for a quarter of a mile for one house, so...
Well, is that a fair point you said?
Is that right?
Back in the old days, the airport was charging for...
Any other questions, comments? Other business?
We have one, errors and admissions from the listener's office, there's a little confusion in the property purchase and the CO period. It's decided that, given the condition of the house, it should be inspected, so our appraiser from Nimerick and Larry Johnson inspected it, and the valuation was about fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars with good cause. So this is a new form, this isn't the same thing we've done before, but there's a column on the right side, middle, if the board approves the reduction, then we're increasing it there. Again, they went up and inspected the house, it had been purchased... Again, they went up and inspected the house. It had been purchased. It was originally listed or appraised at one ninety-one. As I said, the name is Neil Fraser Jeremiah, who is responsible for a large part of this, getting the tax straight out of town this year. Went up and went through the building and decided it needed to come down from that, so.
Okay.
And the listers also.
Oh, yeah, we had Larry Wood with them.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the air and admission certificate on the property at? Got a name?
That form may only have the parcel number.
Okay, we got a parcel number. Five, seven, three, one, eight, zero, one, zero, two, five, six. Motion to change the property valuation from one ninety-one six hundred to one thirty-six five hundred.
Same.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor with the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Okay, so your admission is accepted.
We need at least, we need at least three signatures on the white opposite the listeners to the other listeners.
We are five.
Well, I'll find a way to say it.
Kind of do it in reverse. Some towns have two, but lots have five, so if you put five, you just.
I went to the parade Sunday, yesterday. Joe and his crew looked great.
Oh, yeah.
In the park. And they, I think they won an award for what they're.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, they were wonderful. I'm really proud of them.
Okay, any other business? Reviewing action items, going back to one we're still carrying is the consolidation of the reserve funds. I'm still at the attorney. She's been on vacation for a couple of weeks, so we haven't had any change in status there. Tonight, we agreed that Mike and Dave would review the bid on the Cross Hill Road project. And also that Dave and I will investigate the grant process for getting broadband feasibility study granted. Anything else? And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stayed adjourned.